It is seven P M and I'd like to call this meeting to order. While this meeting is being held in person, we are also offering the option for the public to participate through Zoom. And preferred instructions on how to participate virtually are included in the city council calendar item located on the front page of missioncast.org. Please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. How about please call the roll?
Bonn?
Here.
Hayden Champosi?
Here.
Loudon?
Yeah.
Riard?
Yeah.
Crane?
Yeah.
Chosey?
Yeah.
All right, first, we do have a revised edition that this evening adding two items. The first of the proclamation and the second is a new business item related to acceptance of right of way permanent sidewalk easements and temporary construction easements for the Johnson Drive Street rehabilitation project. This week, can you please share some additional information on the requested provisions?
Yes, thank you. So we knew that the food pantry's fifth anniversary was being celebrated this year, but didn't realize it was actually in the month of October, so kind of a late minute addition in there having an event tomorrow evening. So we wanted to be able to issue a proclamation to congratulate them on five successful years. So that's the provision on the agenda. And then, as you know, we've been working to get all the right away easements acquired for the Johnson Drive projects. We do have two additional of these tracks that have signed all the documents that we added as a new business item. And so when we get to that item on the agenda, I'll talk to you about who those tracks are and then Director Voice will share kind of where we are with respect to the other remaining tracks.
Okay, great. I would now enter a motion.
Mayor, I move the city council approve the revised October fifteenth, twenty twenty five agenda as presented.
Second, second. Motion and second discussion, seeing none, please call the roll.
Hayden Champosi?
Hi.
Riard?
Hi.
Loudon?
Hi.
Chosey?
Hi.
Bonn?
Hi.
Crane?
Yeah.
Motion carries. Motion carries.
All right, we do not have any public carries this evening, so we will move into our special presentations. We have two special presentations this evening. Our first is the presentation from the Midstates Organized Crime Information Center for Outstanding Cooperation and Performance and Law Enforcement. I believe Chief will preview what this is about and then welcome Brian Carman from M O C I C to present the award. Thank you, Chief.
Evening, Mayor and Council. I wanted to take a few moments just to explain what these two Midstates Organized Crime Information Centers probably brings a lot of questions, want to explain a little bit about what they are and what they do to help us. It's an organization that's federally funded that only law enforcement agencies can belong to. Budgetarily, budgetarily, if we probably spend more money on writing pens every year than we do to M O C I C. It's a two hundred dollar a year membership. For that, we have access to a fleet of analysts that can take our information and turn it into usable educations for court. They provide us background information, can do really deep dives into trying to locate people that we need to locate. They also provide the analytical services, which is something that we used that led to us receiving this support. As you may remember, we had an unfortunate incident in twenty twenty three where a fifteen year old was shot and killed at Silverwood Apartments and that resulted in a Metro Squad being called. And so the cooperation between law enforcement agencies in something like that is paramount. And M O C I C was able to provide us great assistance with that. Just wanted to give you an idea of, an example that I like to use is several years ago when I was still on investigations, we had a shooting into a, into a crowded building on New Year's Eve. And we knew who the suspect was, we had everything. But I presented that case to the district attorney three times and they declined to charge it. So what I did was I took all of our information that we had gathered through subpoena and search warrants and interviews and I took that down to Springfield where they're located. I didn't have to do that, but I thought it was worth the drive to take it down there to lay it out for all of the time on my perspective. Well, they were able to provide me with giant poster sized visuals that probably would have cost them a membership to print. We had to do that ourselves. And after I was able to put everything in that report into a visual format, the D A charged that person and got a conviction. Just as a kind of an example of things they do to help us. And with that, and every M O C I C of the nine state region. So basically Kansas and Missouri North up that line is the region of M O C I C. And every region, every area has a law enforcement coordinator that works for M O C I C. It's kind of a, and now that is when, what brings Brian Carman into that. He is our law enforcement coordinator, retired law enforcement officer himself. So with that, I will introduce you to Brian Carman.
And thank you for having me. Appreciate you. I have all of Kansas and Northern Missouri in my A O R. That's three hundred and ninety one agencies, over eight hundred and forty some miles. Of those three hundred and forty, I would say admissions in the top five, at least top five are in my user. So they use this and that's what we're here for. We're funded by the B J, Colonel Justice Assistance, your federal tax dollars. Thank you. I think we do a pretty good job what we do. What the chief was talking about, products, when you get up on a stand, just like here, when you're trying to articulate something, especially as complicated as this case was and involved with Metro Squad, which is a group of detectives throughout the metro that come together to investigate homicides. They come in here and they, they create this, what we call case file. What we did is we took that case file and we created products, posters that the chief said, that, that showed the picture rather than sitting on a stand and articulating that. And that's what we do in the nine states, Northern, South Dakota, Illinois, Iowa, Kansas, Missouri, Nebraska, Minnesota. And this one, Wisconsin. Yes, we got about probably fifteen thousand plus users in that A O R. We're focused, we do have membership with the D A, F B I, N H S, those type of organizations. But predominantly our focus is small and medium sized departments that don't have the budgetary funds for analytical, what we call analysts, that can find people and create products like that. So any questions?
Questions?
Again, Leah, I have a question. I just thank you. That's, that's an amazing resource, especially if you were smaller cities that wouldn't be able to look forward to have the staff to do that to them then, so.
Yeah, I want to give a shout out to, to your, to your chief. I did twenty five years with the Kansas City Missouri Police Department. In that twenty five years, nobody ever told me that we were a member of M O C I C for the previous forty years, right? So that was disappointing when I came along to sign them. So I think, I think you're really fortunate to have somebody that, yeah, somebody that far out ahead and, and is a good steward of, of his budgets. Goodness to the chief.
You want to tell them a little bit about their work?
Which looks really neat.
Yes.
And it's not a hand. It's not.
So every year we have a conference. This year was in Wisconsin Dells. We bring in, I think we have almost four hundred of law enforcement there at this, this conference, which is a pretty good size for conferences. We gave away five awards. I brag that I think this was one of, this showcased our best work since it was such a multifaceted, complicated case. The other cases were a missing person, a drug case and something else like that. Not that those are not important, but I think this really showcased the work that, that your department did and then how we assisted, so.
And joining us tonight are two of the detectives, detective lieutenant and detective that worked diligently on that case for months and months until it finally came to resolution. So Lieutenant Palmerian affected for two years.
One, two, three. Thank y'all.
Check out the P D social media for more info about the pink badges.
Thank you. Let's see, we do have a second and final special presentation tonight, which is a proclamation honoring the Mission Community Food Pantry's fifth anniversary. The Mission Community Food Pantry's commitment to serving those in the local community struggling with hunger and food insecurity has not wavered during its five years of operations and it is an honor to have them serving in our mission community. Over these years, the pantry has been a steadfast source of nourishment, dignity and hope. Operating twice monthly to serve neighbors in needs with food, hygiene and basic essentials with no qualifications or identification required. Behind every distribution is a community. Donors who give generously, volunteers who labor tirelessly and leaders who persevere in building partnerships, including with harvesters, to expand the pantry's reach and impact. Because of this shared commitment, countless families have had the reassurance that their next meal is not unflurryd. On this milestone, we honor the pantry, it's hardworking and dedicated volunteer and all who give with open hands. May this proclamation remind us of the power of collective compassion and inspire us to continue strengthening this vital resource for years to come. Next, we move into the issuance of notes and bonds. We do not have any items related to the issuance of notes or bonds this evening, so we will move on to our consent agenda. Our consent agenda has five items tonight. Our council committees met on October eighth and fully discussed each of these items. The committees agreed that the items listed on our consent agenda are routine enough to be considered under a single motion. If a council member or member of the public would like an item removed from the consent agenda, they may request that at this time. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve. Mayor, I move the city council adopt a consent agenda as printed, items four A through four D.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second, be further discussion. Seeing none, Loudon, please call the roll.
Loudon?
Hi.
Crane?
Hi.
Riard?
Hi.
Hayden Champosi?
Hi.
Bonn? Chosey?
Hi.
Motion carries.
Next, we move into public comment. If any members of the public would like to make a comment on items not included on our agenda, now will be the time. Oh, yeah, I want to, and say your name and city residents for the record.
My name is Jacob Claire and I, I have noticed that in between fifty nine and thirty nine, kind of where the wood thing, over there, in, in, by Mission Dells Apartments, there is a big dip in the, in the middle and there's a lot of cracks on that sidewalk or by Dearborn that need to be fixed.
Right, did you get that address?
Between, yeah, fifty nine, fifty nine, thirty nine, yeah.
The sidewalk is, is on Dearborn?
Yeah, yes.
On Dearborn, is that the same one that you were talking about?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate letting us know. All right, seeing no further hands, we do not have any items to make for the planning mission this evening, so we will move on to our committee reports. Councilmember Chosey, will you please provide a report from Finance Administration Committee?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The Finance Administration Committee met on October eighth and considered four items. The meeting minutes, ordinance authorizing the issuance of industrial revenue bonds or I R Vs for the Mission Flats, K L C projects, core fee schedule changes, ordinance update, and the sale of real property and equipment council policy update were approved under the consent agenda. No item will be considered under the regular agenda tonight. And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Riard, will you please provide a report for the Community Development Committee? Yes, thank you, Mayor. The Community Development Committee also met on October eighth and considered two items. The meeting minutes and Johnson Drive Traffic Signal Enhancement Project contract award were approved of the consent agenda earlier tonight. No items will be considered under the regular agenda this evening. Please mark a report. All right, next we move into unfinished business. We do not have any unfinished business tonight, so we will move into our new business. We do have one item of new business tonight, which is for easement acquisition for the twenty twenty six Johnson Drive Street Rehabilitation Project. This week, please provide a cover report.
Okay, so as I mentioned, we have been working on investment acquisition. We do have two tracks where we secure the easements, track five, which is N N L Reel P, Adeleware Limited Partnership, known by that as R Vs, and Winreal Onwriting Company L P, known by those pieces of that. So those documents, we have those documents in hand, signed. And so following your acceptance, we will issue a little compensation to those property owners. I will invite Director Voice out here in just a moment to kind of share where we are on the remaining tracks on this project. We do have a virtual hearing scheduled for, I think it's three or three thirty? Three thirty P M on Monday, this coming Monday, which I believe, the purpose of that hearing is to appoint the appraisers, the portal appoint three independent appraisers who will continue to work through the process. We will continue to negotiate throughout that process. But our goal was to actually remove as many properties as we could prior to that process. So, do you want to come up and share some additional information?
Thank you. So, yes, exciting to get two in hand today so that we can go ahead and execute that. We have been working diligently with the other ten, ten parcels that we need. We believe that we will have in hand, probably within the next week, the property owners, and I'm not going to use their names, I'm just going to go by what we know them as, Burger King, Starbucks, C V S, Sherwin-Williams and McDonald's. We have three other that are, possibly will go through the condemnation process. That would be Brae Development, that's the far west end of property at fifty eight hundred Fox Ridge, titled Lady Car Wash and the Big Biscuit Property. Some of the challenges that we faced in negotiations in the beginning were corporate businesses and finding the correct people to talk with. So we have their addresses, mailing addresses, they don't necessarily know they go to the correct people and it just gets held up. And once they got the petition for condemnation, then we heard, heard from folks. So the last couple of weeks has been a scramble for a lot of people to get their information and what they needed. Negotiating with the owners, some of them are going out and getting independent appraisals. They're getting values based on improved properties, which were only taking the frontage of their property or side of their property for easements and sidewalks. So the improved value of a property isn't the same as the value that our appraisers are looking at. So then it's kind of a back and forth in those negotiations and that just impacts to operations. So that corridor has a lot of folks that have drivethrus and that will have some impacts because we are changing the grades, because we're putting in some integrated sidewalks into, or integrated retaining walls into the sidewalks. So that's going to change the grade of driveways and some other things. And so there will be impacts to operations and just trying to negotiate terms and, and for the property owners, for their tenants to understand how long the impacts will be. Unfortunately, the construction process can sometimes be driven by weather, by materials and by progress. And so we don't always know how long a drive through might be closed. And so that's been a long time of negotiations to try to figure that out and for people like Starbucks to figure out what they're going to do in the interim when their drive thru is not open and that's where they get a majority of their business. Amen. So, so that's been a lot of, of the challenges. Moving forward, I, you know, the negotiations won't stop after the hearing on Monday. And most of these people were in talks and were very close. It's just a matter of getting those signed easements from their, their signers and sent back to us. A lot of them are locals, so they're coming from Florida and California and Texas. And so just trying to get those overnighted and into our hands prior to Monday, those will all be released from the petition for condemnation once we have those in hand. So we're working diligently around the clock, answering emails on Saturday nights of, you know, get a talk when they come in so that I can get them all their information that they need so that we can get these easements back in time to bring them down from this petition and get their money out the door and get them in front of you to approve so that we can hopefully let our project in the, in the right timeframe and start this project on time and not delay it any further. Any questions? Let's begin.
And my understanding is that if, if for properties that go to condemnation, the appraisers are not allowed to consider impacts to business as part of the price. So why is that part of our, our?
I, I'm not an attorney and that's just what our attorney told us. I, I, I think.
Basically prefer that to go in the court?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, we don't, we don't. There are some cost to cure items. Loss of business is not compensable under the eminent domain statutes. But it, it's, there have been things that we've, we've been asked to do or factor in, you know, some which we've been able to accommodate, some which we can't in terms of how long do you think you would have a drive thru closed? But it hasn't impacted the compensation that we've paid.
So that's a good question, basically, yeah.
Yes.
That makes sense, yes.
So, yeah, some of the items that we've done is, so cost to cure is going to include things like moving a sign during construction and replacing it. Some companies like McDonald's has a specific contractor that has to be used. So rather than us doing it, we paid them to do it. So that's included in the compensation package. Other properties, we've taken away some parking and so we're able to re, re-scope the project to add, you know, we took away six parking spots from Sherwin-Williams, but we were able to add three parallel parking spots to their property. So those are some of the negotiated.
That makes sense, yeah. I'm certainly asking the value in fewer properties going into this proceeding better. I appreciate that information.
Anyone else for something? I want to, I don't have a, I don't have a question. I was just going to say that that non-project looks really good and I'm happy it's finished.
The one, the whole heart.
I wish that was ours.
Share with your colleagues. Any, anything else? All right, thank you, Stephanie. Uh, next.
Motion. Mini motion.
Oh, sorry, we need our motion, yes. My bad. Is there any member of the group of the public who would like to comment on this issue? Seeing none, any further council discussion? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion related to acceptance of the easement acquisition for the twenty twenty six Johnson Drive Street Rehabilitation Project as presented.
Mayor, I move the city council authorizing acceptance and reporting the right of way permanent sidewalk easements and temporary construction easements required for the twenty twenty six Johnson Drive Street Reconstruction Project. This includes authorizing the city administrator to execute the easement documents on behalf of the city admission and to issue payment to property owners as a.
Second. Motion and a second, seeing none, councilmen, seeing none, Loudon, please call the roll.
Riard?
Hi.
Hayden Champosi?
Hi.
Crane?
Hi.
Bonn? Chosey?
Hi.
Loudon?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, we will next move into comments from the city council. This is an opportunity for comments from our council members. Does anyone on the council have something they'd like to share? Debbie?
Just want to thank public works and the police for everything they do. They're so responsive, they get back with us right away and it makes such a difference in this two and a half square miles to have people in the bond right away. Residents are really extremely happy with the service that they provide and I just want to say. And the community center, I'm sorry, immediately.
And I did also want to thank chief, the governing body was invited to a police awards recognition picnic this weekend and that was really exciting to see all of the great work of our department and to get to meet some of their friends and family and to hear from the officers, you know, their appreciation for the council's work and to share our appreciation for their work and got to hear some, some stories, some cases I hadn't even heard before. And so, yeah, just everything that they deal with, I think it's good to, good to get that one with me during, for sure. Thanks for inviting you.
Next, we will move into our council committee liaison reports. These reports allow the entire governing body to stay up to date with the activities of our wards, commissions and committees. First is councilmember Loudon for Sustainability Commission.
Oh, just that was good. Yep, hello. So the Sustainability Commission met on the sixth of this month at the land, because the land was officially certified, we silvered, so they received a platinum scorecard from us. I realize maybe it's confusing. We also agreed that it was confusing while we were talking about it. They're also building two subcommittees, one for budget with me, we of course approved the same budget for them. So they're wanting to make sure that they are stewards of that budget with us. And then another one to start their strategic planning process. They're just going to go back to their first principles, make sure that what they are advising us to do still is what we need to do. And they ask that I remind you not to forget to attend the Go Green Environmental Fair this weekend at Powell Community Center from like nine to noon or something. You'll be able to test and drive electric vehicles and then walk to Oktoberfest afterward. So that is my report.
For those who are on staff confirmed as I do, the correct time.
Night.
Yes, that's right. All right. There you go. Perfect. Let's see, next we have councilmember Crane for Parks Recreation Treaty, which Parks and Recreation Treaty Commission met on Monday, this week, October thirteenth, and discussed a variety of issues. Overview of a summer camp provided by Dan with a bunch of data that, that talks about how many people and what they learned and what their feedback was, as well as the Mission Aquatic Center and everything it provides. We had, we talked about the Broadmore Bridge improvement. And Fran and Thomas, a contracting group, had been hired to provide design options at the community center. And we had a spooky walk this Friday night, October seventeenth at Stringway Park. I encourage any of you that can go to go and they're looking at weather conditions. Jenny has left all of us a message about, I think it's bad, we'll make other plans. But maybe it's supposed to rain? It's supposed to rain, but not till late, so I'm not sure. All right, next we have councilmembers Riard and Chosey from Mission Magazine.
You want me to say?
Beautiful.
Magazine is our board, met on Thursday, October ninth. We looked over the music issue that should have all seen by now and thought it was received quite well. And we've reviewed a great variety of subjects and just an interesting to have the talent in Mission with some full look backs and, and we made features on music within the city. Still working through just some bumps around ads and designs and dates and places and things as we work through some loss. I'll assure you, I think that's largely clear enough or we have a path forward anyway. Final twenty twenty five issue, we'll sort of, you know, focus on politics of missions. So we've got featuring Jerusalem Cafe, Mud Pie, you know, doing photography and interviews and doing the stories put together now. There's really a lot of depth in Mission there as well, so lots of things, a lot of ground to cover and lots of avenues being explored for businesses that do, you know, want to be featured in that. Kind of looking at, had brought me again, just the, the sort of writing pool for stories. We have some, some folks that are joint city staff that can, that can write stories now and just looking at how we can get more local folks plug in their writing in the community, engage with the story. And that would be a, is a positive lift. And then next year, looking forward to, in more ways than just for the magazine, but the seventy fifth anniversary coverage for the city as far as magazines concerned and having ideas around just, you know, nostalgic eats, before and after type of features and photos, little artifacts, signage, starting to think about what, what coverage of the seventy third anniversary. That's me. Did you have any comments?
No, it was more than I, I mean, we, we just talked about, you know, some of the subjects also in the magazine. No, it was more that I, I mean, we, we just talked about, you know, some of the subjects, also in the magazine, we're really excited, we loved the actual coverage of itself, which is great, but, um, yeah, a lot of good positive feedback, and I would just introduce the folks.
I did have a comment come in from a resident today about they hope that the magazine would reflect on the, the operation of the city in that all our elected officials are nonpartisan, and that's what these positions are. They would like to see that in the magazine, an emphasis on that, and Lauren, I can't remember a time you really got into politics in the magazine, but.
I think the ref, and the reference may have been to that Mission Monthly Newsletter, that was my takeaway as opposed to the magazine that went out, that was emailed out yesterday. Okay.
That includes our report.
And then my understanding is we don't have an update from our community office, we need this one, we'll return that next one. Um, Lauren, are there any other items you'd like to share with council tonight?
Uh, I guess I realized right now that I am Justin. But we'll ask Robin, as I think, as a couple of business updates and, um.
So you will get, I know it's on the National City Event, as they will want to talk about Oktoberfest, too, for everyone's got it.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
Thank you, yes, so I was sure of Oktoberfest, I have to leave the Go Green Environmental Fair, um, from nine to the other communities, and on Saturday. It's like your way east going on to there, you'll find, um, in a wonderful Oktoberfest event, um, sort of surrounded by, uh, our friends over at Curry Sealer, and Rock Creek Brewing and Samuel's Brewing, they have pulled together some fun vendors, they have expensive food options, obviously some near choices if that's your, if your preference, um, Primrose will also be selling some cocktails, if they need. They're hoping for a fall day, we're getting like a late summer or fall day, I mean, it's not as of today, but, um, the house of pot drinks and the restaurant B T A will be there doing some fun activities. Uh, Lulu's Boutique is setting up a lady, old, um, sort of farm truck, some pumpkins and things for a photo op. Um, we will have a few of our Mission Market vendors, so if you need, um, any baked goods, specifically, or what is popping into my head that I know is a confirmed vendor, um, some fun jewelry, including one of our Mission Market attendants who also makes jewelry and sells it. Um, so all of those options will be there, uh, noon to six at the Mission Market site, Johnson Drive will be closed from eleven-thirty to six-thirty between Reeves and Knoll for the event, so we have barricades, the street closure company is coming, Public Works is going to put out some larger vehicles to promote emphasize the street closure, well, Public Works, uh, barricades at the end of Reeves, the end of Maple, so people can't get into the road with the street closure during the event, but they work really hard and, um, so come to join us Monday. I haven't answered any questions about Oktoberfest, so I can, if anyone.
Questions for Robin?
Okay, three quick business updates for you, so we have, um, over on to the terrace, just e, what east of Knoll, we have two buildings that used to house, um, two store child care centers, and they, um, closed, and a new owner has taken them over and really, um, done an amazing job of refurbishing the two houses that sit next to each other. So fifty-four oh four and fifty-four oh eight West Fifteenth Terrace, the Kid Crew is what the both, the business is called, two separate buildings, one business. Um, I think that they are taking children from eighteen months to school age, so. Ask that on to anyone that may need the information, but it looks like a great addition to that area. And then we have Beauty Lab coming soon to fifty-nine oh four Woodson Street, and now open the book club KC at fifty-seven thirty-five Johnson Drive. Can you answer any questions?
Questions for Robin?
And a ribbon cutting tomorrow.
We do have ribbon cutting tomorrow, goodness, Mayor busy folks, not over. North East Johnson County, we're been cutting for Zulaga Real Estate, they've been, um, in Mission for about a year and a half, recently during the chamber, and so the mayor will cut the ribbon for their chamber grand opening tomorrow afternoon at four-thirty.
I'll be with McKenzie.
Yay.
I'll be there.
I will be there, I will not be there, I'm sorry.
I can hold McKenzie.
That's right. Okay, well, thank you, and I asked Robin to do that because I wasn't sure how to pronounce.
Zulag, Zuluaga is how I say it.
Hey.
I, that's.
We'll find out tomorrow. Okay, I, um, as I mentioned, uh, just without today, and so, uh, we closed, uh, September last week, and we are now kind of in that phase as we get into the last quarter of really starting to drill down and uh, get some additional detail and focus on where we think we were going to, where we think we will end the year. Things are trending, um, we haven't seen any changes I know since where we were when, you know, it's only been a month since we adopted the budget, so. Um, we keep a pretty close tabs on that, but we will continue to watch that. I know we've, uh, put some emphasis on a lot of the larger infrastructure projects that are winding down and making sure we've got, uh, a clear picture of costs, and we're at an, an interesting stage in the process, uh, right now where we have big expenditures going out for our infrastructure work and timing of reimbursements and what we're collateralized for, and so there's a lot of moving of, of money just to keep us, uh, in bounds, but things look good, so. Um, hope to see those trends continue through the end of the year. Just a couple of other things. Uh, today, there was an emergency stormwater project that was started at fifty-sixth and Metcalf. May have seen some more inch fencing kind of at that intersection, at that corner for the last probably six weeks or so, there was some, uh, failure. Our Public Works crews cleaned out a culvert on the northwest, um, corner of that a, a while back, and we were trying to hold on to, uh, keep the pipe on the other, the opposite side of that. Um, so southeast corner, uh, viable until we could potentially get to construction of the block project, and that just wasn't going to happen, so. I think we ended up slightly over ten thousand dollars, it was within my authority, so we solicited three works, and that work should be finished, um, probably by the end of this week, uh, just to, we don't want to have street flooding, and that's an area that, there's a lot of traffic in and out there. Um, I think I had mentioned, maybe not in a public meeting, but the asbestos removal happened recently at the old J C Penney Call Center for the block project, and I had a text from Mr. Mesfer this morning and confirmed with our community development staff that they pulled their demo permit, and they are beginning demolition of the structure, so. Uh, you'll see activities over there, I think we mentioned. Lauren, how dramatic will that be, like, is that something we should be communicating to the public in that area? Not very dramatic.
Yeah, I know.
Sorry.
So, Bill, I think we, we touched on it very briefly today, once we became aware of it, but I think I thought we'd be, we'd just let you, because you're going to get the questions, what's happening.
Yeah, yeah.
It'll be a good opportunity to remind people what the project is.
Okay.
Do some of that sort of thing, but no, there's nothing, nothing to go watch or find for your.
Got it.
You should question then go over to the next committee.
Yeah, it's a good question. We do have, uh, as I mentioned, the eminent domain hearing virtually on Monday afternoon, Tuesday afternoon from one to four, uh, several of us will be participating in the KDOT Global Consult process out at Rainbow Lodge, which is where, um, projects that are, KDOT has, uh, proposed in their ten to fifteen-year I, uh, statewide transportation plan, uh, are presented, and communities come and can advocate for their projects. They don't tell you what projects are on the list until you get there, apparently, but I think we have determined that ours is on the list, and so we will be uh, attending from one to four, um, to just kind of advocate, and our project would be the, um, rebuild of the Johnson Drive Metcalf Bridge to include kind of the peanut, uh, double round option. And Lauren, just for some of the newer folks, it's not really in our project, and that it's still a KDOT project, will we be input on which design? Yes, and KDOT, either later this year or kind of the first, probably more likely person next year will be doing some temporary repairs to that bridge. We're working through an agreement with them right now, even though it's not our project, there are certain things that both the Royal Park Commission have to enter into is the adjoining communities, um, that are occurring there, so there's just a lot going on, um, and I think I've said it before, but I'm going to keep saying it, so you'll consider yourselves one, but November, December, and probably January agendas are going to be filled to the brim with all kinds of, uh, action items, so a little bit more tell, but I think that's all I have. Great. More questions for Lauren? All right, we do not have any, we need for a second good session this evening, so before we adjourn, I want to share with the public that the video from this meeting will be available early on our website at MissionCast.org, there being no further business, I would entertain a listen to adjourn.
Salute.
Mayor say aye?
Aye.
Fair adjourn.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. There's committee meetings, the. Committees are the day after. The day after.
Day after, yeah.